It seems that we are live. One minute before three thirty according to my computer. But anyway, it's nice to have one minute extra. Welcome everyone to this session. This is the session about gender economics and policy implications. Let me just share my screen with you. Okay, okay, let me see if I can. Okay, so this session is a session that the the Royal Economic Society Women's Committee organizers or has been organizing for for quite some time at the Royal Economic Society. My name is Almodena Sevilla and I am the Chair of the Royal Economic Society Women's Committee. I'm also a professor of economics at UCL. And we really have a very good lineup of speakers today to talk to us about where we are in the field of gender economics and particularly the effectiveness of policies and the kind of policies that have worked and can work to increase diversity in economics and also in the economy in general. So the tradition for this session has been to to talk about the position of women economists in the field and mostly the focus has been in academia. And I wanted to break this tradition this year for two main reasons. One reason is that the ARES increased commitment to diversity has resulted in quite a bit of presence in terms of the the sessions that we have had at the conference covering diversity issues and in particularly in particular gender issues. So the first session on Monday was led by Stefania Paredes, who is the new diversity champion at the ARES. And that session actually talked about promoting diversity in economics and the situation of women in economics and and basically covered some of the topics that had traditionally been covered by the session of the Women's Committee. So I thought it was a good opportunity for us to actually think about the field of economics and the presence of gender in the field. And it was just by coincidence that me organizing this session coincided with having been invited to edit a special issue on gender economics for the Oxford Review of Economic Policy. So a lot of the presenters in the session have contributed to that, to that issue that came out in the fall. And really what I wanted to do with this session was what I wanted to do with the issue of of gender economics at the Oxford Review of Economic Policy. First, the observation that gender and gender issues and gender economics is undergoing a step change in economics. There are a lot of things happening right now that are really changing the field. So what we have today is two speakers. The first two speakers will be reviewing some of the old questions and reassessing the kind of policies that have been successful. But also, we do have, the last two speakers will be talking about new avenues of research that are really changing the field. So the third speaker will be talking about the influence of social psychology and how that has changed the way that we perceive inequality and discrimination. And the last speaker will be talking about where stereotypes originate and how we can change those. And that, of course, so the change that is happening in the field is also being fueled by the push from the regulator and policymakers to really make a change in promote diversity, not just in economics, but also in the labor market. So with that in mind, I think I'm going to let the floor to our first speaker and and I will be looking at the questions. So please do post all the questions that you have to speakers. I will post, will be posting those in the platform and passing them on to the speakers. Please, you can post the questions anytime. We'll have some time after each presentation. Each presentation will be about 20 minutes and then hopefully we'll have some time at the end of the session as well. So the floor is yours.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so you know, I wanted to start by thanking Almodena and all those who were involved in organizing these terrific ARES meetings and this session in particular. It's really very exciting to be here and share, you know, my work with you. So today I'll start this session by telling you about gender pay gap in the UK, how it evolved and you know what these sources may be. My talk, just to preempt, will bring together pieces of work that I have done with many co-authors, including with Almodena, but also with many others. Okay, so this is what I'll be talking about today. I will start by documenting where we are in terms of gender inequalities in pay and in the labor market. I'm going to focus on the UK, so all the empirics are going to be on UK data. And I'll show you that over the last two and a half decades, more or less, we did not see much progress in closing these inequalities. And I think this is important for two reasons, or these inequalities are important in particular for two reasons or for various reasons, not just for three. First of all, and most obviously for fairness and for equity. As there is a generalized sense that opportunities are not the same for all and for reasons that cannot be easily rationalized. I think this is going to be a theme across the session. Second, because women remain more vulnerable to poverty than men do and particularly as mothers and particularly as lone mothers. And the precarious and deprived circumstances in which they often are confronted with are thought to have permanent effects, both for themselves and for the development of their children. And third, because there is a real risk that these inequalities and in particular their manifestation in terms of the intermittent participation of women have aggregate costs that are associated with mismatch of workers to jobs and misallocation of talents. So then I will look at how these gaps are formed over the course of life and in particular in relation to children. And finally, I'll ask what drives these inequalities in pay? And I will pay particular attention to the role of comparative advantage. In particular, I'll show you that it does not seem to be the case that comparative advantage can explain the divergence in labor markets experiences between men and women and hence leaving the door open for other explanations, such as for instance norms, which we will hear more about later in the session. So let me start with some findings on inequality, on trends in inequality and where we are. This graph here uses data from the UK Labor Force Survey to show how the real weekly earnings of men and women have evolved over the past 25 years. It uses data for the main working years of workers, so those aged between 20 and 55, and it excludes those in full-time education, those who are retired or long-term sick. Now, the line in blue show earned levels and can be read on the left axis. They exhibit early gains in wages, debt plateau and drop around the years of the Great Recession. The drop is more marked for men who have not yet fully recovered, actually just before the pandemic from that earlier shock. The gender gap is shown in red and can be read from the axis on the right. We can see some steady progress towards inequality over the period. But really, the big picture here is that the gap in pay remains huge. At the start of the period, women were making less than half of what men did. And by 2019, women's earnings were still at about 55% of those of men. Now, the existing differences cannot be fully attributed to major differences in skills, at least at a very high level. And I think Sandra will paint a much more detailed picture later in this session. So this graph here shows in blue how the education attainment of women and men changed over the same periods. It plots the proportion of 20 to 55-year-olds with, on the left, high school qualifications are higher and on the right, those with a three-year college degree are higher. In red, you can see the gap in education attainment between men and women. What we can see is that during these same three decades, the education of women shoot up and the proportion of college-educated women is actually now five percentage points higher than that of men. Now, this convergence in education attainment is likely to explain, you know, at least part or if not much of the convergence in earnings that we saw before. And indeed, that's what's shown in this graph here. It's essentially conditional on education fixed effects. The gap in earnings did not close at all during the last 25 years. This is essentially shown and is evident on the dashed gray line in the graph, where the red line is the same gap that we showed before. We can also look at previous, sorry, at the various margins of this gap that build up these differences in earnings and essentially unpacking the gender gap in pay. The first gap is employment. So women are less likely to be in work, but there has been some important convergence as their participation in work increased. However, all gains were down to changes in education as more educated women are more likely to be in work. There has also been a convergence in hours worked, even conditional on education, as women are working increasingly more hours than men do in comparison, relative. But overall, this resulted in some modest convergence in hourly wages over 25 years since the mid 90s. So with educational adjusted differences, the gap closed by about four lock points. And this convergence actually is confined to the bottom educational group. So if here we consider three educational levels, again, the those who left education at 16 with little or no qualifications, high school graduates and college graduates. What we can see is that convergence in wages is confined to the bottom educational group in blue. And there is essentially no convergence at all for the mid and top educational groups. In fact, if we were to dig a little bit deeper in this result, we will be able to see that it stems mostly from the wages of low-skilled men failing to improve. So really, the big picture here is that the modest improvements that we saw recently can be mostly pinned down by relative gains in educational attainment of women relative to men. Okay, so to better understand these gaps, we will look into how they are formed over the course of life. And this graph here was constructed using longitudinal data from the UK Household Longitudinal Study. And it shows some insightful facts in what comes in regards to, you know, how these gaps evolve or are formed. First of all, it shows that inequalities widen gradually with age in all four margins that we are considering. So earnings and participation hours and the wage rates. It also shows that this gender inequality seemed unrelated to innate differences in ability as these would be present earlier in life, but at that stage, the gaps are actually quite small. Moreover, it is clear from the top-left graph that women's earnings flatten out early in their careers and stop growing altogether, while the counterpart for men follows, you know, a much more expansionary trend over a longer period of their lives. Now, these differences cannot be fully explained by mechanical immediate effects of lower employment and hours. Indeed, there are underlying similar differences in wage profiles of women and men shown in the bottom-right graph. It is clear that it isn't only earnings that flatten out for women early in their working life. Hourly wages flatten out too. And these wage figures are especially worrying because they reflect a permanent loss in earnings ability of women relative to men. So even as employment and hours gaps close later in life, persistent differences in wages will keep women behind in terms of pay. So moreover, and why it is still early days for the latest cohorts, what we can see is that so far, nothing much seems to be changing across cohorts. Now, the one thing that also does not change is the fact that women become mothers and men become fathers. And this graph here shows that much of the opening gaps in all the four margins happens in the aftermath of the first birth. So we plot average outcomes for parents around the time of childbirth from five years before up to 10 years after. And we see, for instance, in relation to earnings, that the comparatively small gap that existed before childbirth inflates greatly and almost immediately after birth. In part, this is a consequence of the immediate response in employment and in hours. But the divergence in wages is more gradual and starts later, a few years after birth, as you see at the bottom right. Now, it can reflect various margins of adjustment. For instance, it will be affected by changing selection of women into work after childbirth and as children grow up. Over time, the gradual loss in skills can also play a role in widening the gap in wages. So let's start by the first. This graph here shows that positive selection is indeed an issue. So to preempt, we find that higher-paid women before birth are more likely to remain in paid work than their lower-paid peers. Now, this suggests that raw wage gap figures are likely to underestimate the true magnitude of the gap. So using this insight, what we did was to reweight the sample of fathers so that their distribution of pre-birth wages looks similar to that of mothers' work in each period after childbirth. So this essentially will ensure that we are comparing similar working mothers and fathers. Now, the figure here shows that early after birth, we are indeed underestimating the opening of the gap by up to four lock points. And you know, that's the period essentially when women's selection is most positive. So it's really only those on higher wages that remain working. The difference closes as the child grows up and more women and essentially more lower-paid women return to work. Okay, so then we investigate the extent to which other career differences explain the formation and the persistency of gender gaps in hourly wages. In particular, we look at the role of occupational sorting and experience. Now, the two are very much related as women simultaneously work less and move to lower-paid occupations. We see that occupational choice is responsible for about a quarter of the opening of the gap in the 10 years after childbirth. Losses in full-time and part-time experience explain another third of the opening gap in the same period. Essentially, these results show that much, but not all of the opening gap seems to be due to these aspects of the careers of men and women. Now, we have quantified these losses more rigorously using economic models of labor supply, occupational sorting and wages. I am going, in the interest of time, to skip these results, but essentially what they do is to confirm and reinforce what we already showed to you. So I'll skip quickly to, you know, essentially asking the question of what could be at the root of these differences in, you know, the choices that women and men make in terms of their participation and hours of work that can then actually have an impact on the wages and pay that they get. And I'm asking as well, are these optimal? Now, this is obviously, it's a very difficult question, which actually I'm not going to address, but instead I'll be looking at economic efficiency. And in principle, we could think that specialization might be efficient if it reflects comparative advantage. Now, this graph here shows the role of comparative advantage in the labor market. Since men usually earn more, it could be that families favor, you know, their, his time in work when faced with high demands on their time and say, for instance, due to the arrival of a child. But if that's the case, then in couples where the woman earns more, fathers would be taking the primary care role and possibly reduce their hours in paid work. Now, this graph here shows that that does not happen. Indeed, what we do is to compare couples where either the mother-to-be or the father-to-be are the primary earners. And we look at what happens to their labor supply after childbirth. And what the graph shows very clearly is that it really does not matter who earns more before birth. It is always the mother who permanently reduces her time in paid work. And not only that, the reduction in paid work is by a similar amount irrespective of the relative positions of the spouses in terms of pay. Now, we could think that something, you know, in these responses related to the actual childbirth and the maternity policies and, you know, in part could explain these differences in behavior, you know, why that is persistent. So one alternative that is not going to be sensitive to this sort of considerations is to look into the responses to the COVID-19 shock in working families with school-aged children. So this graph here, which is actually from work that I've done with Almodena and others, is based on new data that we collected to study time use, the time use of families with children during the first lockdown related to the COVID-19 pandemic. What it shows is the ratio of mothers to fathers' hours in various activities during the lockdown period, so that first lockdown period. And here we focus on two parent families where both parents worked before the pandemic. And in this graph, I showed the ratios when the father was the main earner in the family prior to the pandemic. Now, clearly, domestic work, including childcare and housework in these type of families are her responsibility, with mothers dedicating between 50 and 100% more time to these activities than fathers. To compensate, paid work is his responsibility, with mothers doing about half of the working hours of fathers during this period. And crucially, for creativity, they are doing, mothers are doing less than half of the uninterrupted hours of paid work. Now, if she earned more before the pandemic, then comparative advantage will dictate that their roles will be reversed. And this graph here shows what that would imply in terms of the ratio of mothers to fathers' time in each activity. So higher-earner mothers would be doing almost double of the paid work of their partners and about 50% of the domestic work that fathers would do. But unfortunately, reality doesn't support these practices. Mothers who used to be the main earner in the couple prior to the pandemic were doing slightly more domestic work and just as much paid work as their lower-paid partners in lockdown. Moreover, their time in paid work is interrupted more frequently than that of lower-paid fathers, which again may negatively affect their productivity in work. So it seems that maternal time allocation is just responding more strongly to this shock along traditional gender division of responsibilities, which essentially corroborates our early findings for new parents. Now, this response do not look in tune with economic efficiency within the household and essentially leave the door open to other explanations that could rationalize them. And this is about what I had to tell you today.
Okay, thank you, Monica. Really a very interesting question. I guess we have time for some questions. And I was just emailing the, or chatting our technician to see if I'm actually in the right, because I don't see any questions from the audience. So, so I, again, I would encourage everybody to pose questions in the, in the, in the platform. But I do have some questions about your presentation, Monica. So maybe we can just take a couple of minutes to go over my questions. So you were mentioning that it is the lack of, of experience that may be driving this gender gap. And I was just curious, from a policy perspective, is it part-time that is, that is causing this lack of experience? So reduced hours, say, but, but you continue to work or after a child is born? Or is it more that you stop working and then you rejoin the labor market? So the labor force after a couple of years after your child is born? Can we really distinguish what's, what's going on?
Yeah, so, yeah, so in the work I've done, it seems that both are very important, actually. Probably they won't be, you know, as important in different countries because in particular, the relevance and richness of part-time work is, you know, varies quite largely across countries, but it is very important in the UK. And I do find that part-time work can be really important in explaining the gaps in the UK. So the main results that we got in, say, for instance, work with Richard and Vandell and Francis McHirry and Jonathan Shaw is that, you know, those who move into part-time work see that, you know, in the best case scenario, their wages tanking. So they are just stuck at the same level of pay permanently. And taking time off work is more damaging. So it could lead to losses of up to 5% of the wages per year. When we put together, you know, the figures given how much, you know, time women take off work and how much time they take in part-time jobs, we see that, you know, over 50% of the gaps in the UK seem to be, that we can explain due to experience, seem to be a result of taking part-time hours, which, by the way, you know, it's very highly incentivized in the UK. I used to be up to a few years ago by the design of the benefits, tax and benefit system.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have some more questions, but I now see some questions in the chat. We're almost out of time and I want to keep us to 20 minutes, but I'm going to pass on one question. I think we'll be, we'll be fine. Can you tell how much of the gap after children is due to women taking less suitable jobs, worse much?
So I'm actually doing some work on that as well with Fabia Pastovini and Pengpeng Xiao. So we do try to, so actually that was part of what I was going to show you. So actually, maybe I can actually move up here a little bit to these results. So we try to see how women actually, you know, not only they take time off and short hours, this is actually quite strongly associated with taking jobs that are not a good match for their skills and by, you know, moving into occupations that for which they may be overqualified, potentially because these jobs offer other amenities. And in particular, we look at, you know, distance to home as being one amenity that women seem to value quite a lot. And when we do this, we haven't, you know, run all the estimation for all the educational groups, but we did look into, you know, the role of these learning content of jobs and moving into, progressing slower, the occupational ladder and moving into jobs where you might be overqualified for. And that actually seems for the lower-educated group for whom, for which we do have estimate a really very large component of the part of the gap that we can explain. So using experience alone, we actually can explain much less for the lower-educated group than we can for higher-educated individuals. This is actually completely in line with literature. Experience doesn't seem to be as relevant for lower-skilled workers as it is for higher-skilled workers. So we explain about 30% of their gaps over the first 18 years in a child's life of the opening of the gap. But when we add, you know, the loss of skills due to, you know, lack of career progression, lack of progression through different occupations, then we can actually explain almost the double of that.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we're now out of time and I can see that there are more questions, but we'll have to see whether we have some more time at the end. So just for the audience, do not wait until the end because then there's no time to ask the question to the speaker, to pass on the question to the speaker. So I know we've been told to, you know, let the speaker talk for five minutes and then ask questions. That's when this, when we are in person. But now that we are online, we can ask whenever we feel that, that we want to. So thank you very much, Monica. And our next speaker is Sandra McNally, who's going to talk about gender gaps in education. And eh our next speaker is Sandra McNally eh who's going to talk about gender gaps in education. So Sandra.
Thanks, Monica. I think you've just have to stop scare, sharing your screen and I will um share my screen.
Oh, sorry. I think not.
That's great. No, no problem, no problem. So I hope this, um, this is okay, that you can, everybody can see this.
Yes, you may want to select the speaker or the.
I know, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just trying to do that right. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say um thank you very much, um, Amadina, for inviting me and to be part of this session eh with all these other very interesting talks. And I will be presenting um a paper that is published in the eh journal that Amadina edited with eh my colleagues, Chiara Cavaia, Steve Machen and Jenny, Jennifer Ruiz Valaswell. And so um the topic is gender achievement and subject choice in English education. There another technical hitch, I can't seem to move the. Oh, good. Right. Okay, so eh by way of background, in most industrialized countries, um female educational attainment has increased massively over time and women are more likely to go to university than eh men in eh many, many industrialized countries. And on the other hand, they are more likely, less likely to choose science, technology, engineering and maths or STEM subjects. And, and that matters for diversity within those occupations, but it also matters for things like the gender wage gap. And subjective degree has often found to be eh one of the reasons for the eh gender wage differential. So policy concerns are, well, why do males underachieve in education and what can be done about it? And why do females not pursue STEM fields in greater numbers? And both those questions matter from efficiency and equity standpoints. So in the presentation, I want to look at how the gender gap in educational achievement has evolved over time in England. And to what extent differences in post-compulsory outcomes are, can be accounted for by prior achievement and institutional characteristics. I'm, I'm going to put findings in international context and then I'm going to discuss some of the broader literature and policy context, although obviously eh briefly in a short presentation. Um, for people not familiar with the education system in England, just to give a very brief introduction to it, eh full-time compulsory education is between the age of five and sixteen and, and the national curriculum is divided into different key stages. There's a teacher assessment at age seven, national one, and normally tests at age eleven, which are national tests, and at age sixteen, which are GCSE exams. Then there's further education between age sixteen and eighteen, which most people do now and which is supposed to be compulsory, at least do some form of education till eighteen. And about half do academic education, so A-levels, and the other half do vocational education eh at, at different levels, sometimes equivalent A-levels, sometimes beneath that. And about one-third of a cohort go to university at age nineteen or twenty. And in contrast to many other countries, tertiary education outside of a university degree eh is quite limited. It does look quite lucrative for the people who do it. Of course, it's difficult to deal with selection. And it's one of the areas that the government would like to try to expand eh tertiary vocational education. And, and we can look at all this because we have good administrative data linking up all stages of education, the National People Database linked with the individual learner record, linked with the eh higher education data, he's a data. And now this. Coming to my first slide, I'm, I'm going to just show the gap in achievement of um some of these indicators I mentioned. One is um teacher assessment, and this is the gap in the percentage of the gender gap and the percentage of people who achieve eh given targets at age seven for reading maths and writing. And, and what you can see at the top line is that there's almost, there's very, very little difference in maths between girls and boys. And for eh reading and writing, there's a pretty big gender gap in favor of girls. And girls do much better eh at reading and writing than boys at that age. And, and you'll see a big line, eh vertical line, two thousand and sixteen. This is when there was changes to the curriculum and some changes to the tests eh, and they were made eh more challenging. And you can see that doesn't affect the gender gap in maths. And, but it does affect the gender gap in reading and writing. So the boys who are weaker find it more difficult to achieve the target after the standards have been raised. And in fact, eh both girls and boys suffer when standards raised. It's not just eh boys, it's just the gap increases as well. And for eh the, at, at age eleven, this is a test data, but again, it's based on the achievement. The graph is based on the achievement of targets. It's a best time series we can get to look at this. And there is a very, very little difference in maths eh at age eleven. And there is a bit more difference at the top of the distribution. Boys outperform girls at the top quintile by about eh five percentage points. They're more likely to do very well, but eh the average is eh not there, eh zero. And for eh gaps in reading and writing, they're also very big, particularly for writing. There was improvement eh in the late two thousands. And again, it, it, the gender gap was knocked back a bit by the eh introduction of tougher standards and eh and slightly different testing. And, and it would be interesting, of course, to know eh whether that makes any difference to people's trajectories in the longer term. And, but it's too early to say yet. And, and at GCSE, and this is the picture for GCSE, again, there is no pick, no difference between eh girls and boys in maths. In fact, if you look at the top of the distribution here, the percentage of girls and boys getting an A to A star in maths, it's the same. So it, it, there really isn't anything between them there. And for English, eh again, girls are consistently doing better than boys. And, and that has been the case for many years. And, and then when you look at the overall indicators, whether or not people get five or more good GCSEs at grades HC in the old terminology, and we're just stopping before the new Progress Eight was introduced. And ba- basically, girls do a lot better on, in all of that. And you can see in the middle of the graph, a dashed line eh with little dots and it sort of stops at around two thousand and thirteen. And that's when vocational qualifications used to be, could be used a bit more for the GCSE measure. And that, that was thought to be eh make life easier, that teachers might put people inappropriately, inappropriately into easier subjects, which was, was happening. And, and some of that changed after a set of reforms. Eh, some of the reforms that Alison Wolf introduced are recommended. And, but you can see that eh a potential downside of that is that boys were the ones that were improving and they were the ones that suffered more from eh those vocational options being, being removed. And when we look at the gender gap and eh post-sixteen education, this is just eh looking at different indicators. So eh the first panel is dropout from education at age eighteen and the second panel is further education outcomes and the third panel is eh tertiary education, higher education up to age nineteen. And, and the two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen ref- refer to eh GCSE cohorts and because we were interested to see whether there was much change over time. There hasn't really been that much change over time, so I'm just going to focus on the last column, which is the gender gap in two thousand and thirteen. So boys are more likely to drop out of education early and to be observed eh as not in education training or employment compared to women. And in further education, girls are, do better at achieving eh level two or more, that's eh a GCSE or vocational equivalent. And achieving level three or more, that's a good upper secondary education, either A-levels or vocational equivalent. And, but when you look at eh what people do, and boys are more likely to do STEM in further education and they're more likely to be enrolled in an apprenticeship. And when you look at tertiary education, well, there's so few people doing eh sub-degree qualifications. That's eh level four, level five qualifications, that there really isn't much of a gender gap. And girls are more likely to enter university, which is not entirely surprising, given their educational performance difference. And, but they are much less likely to do STEM at university, conditional on going to university in the first place. So do gaps in post-compulsory choices simply reflect eh school achievement? Well, you can look at that in a sort of accountancy way. You can look at whether the gender gap niche and staying in on an education eh it simply goes away once you control for GCSE scores and key stage two primary school scores. And basically, the gender gap and those outcomes does fully reflect differences in achievement. If you look at eh achieving a good upper secondary education or going to university, that gender gap drops by at least half when controlling for prior achievement. Institutional levels, factors like the kind of school you went to, have a modest additional role over and above that. So mostly, things can be accounted for by just their prior achievement. Of course, the kind of school you go to has a role in producing that achievement too. So you can't really say that the school you go to doesn't matter. It may matter. But in our framework, when we include eh school fixed effects on top of prior achievement, you don't explain that much more. The gender gap in apprenticeships eh and sub-degree education is invariant to controls. So it has nothing to do with eh prior achievement. And the gender gap in STEM is not very sensitive to including controls for achievement, demographics, institutional level variables. And I will show you some regressions to illustrate the very last point, which I think is quite interesting, that eh the eh first column shows you the raw gender gap in the probability of some sort of STEM qualification. And the second column shows what the gender gap is, once you put in lots of controls, including for prior achievement at age sixteen, achievements in maths, achievement in English, eh achievement in key stage two eh institutional fixed effects. And when you put all of those things in, you don't really explain much of the difference, for example, eh of eh doing a degree in STEM and higher education, it is still very, very high. And of course, if you put in A-level choices or post-sixteen choices in subject terms eh in that regression, which we haven't done, you could probably account for more of the differences because people's further education choices are made with a view to what they're going to be doing in higher education. And so you most certainly would eh reduce the gap if you did that. And these sorts of findings are absolutely typical of what people have found elsewhere, that once, yeah, basically, prior achievement really doesn't explain eh why eh girls don't do STEM. It's not because they're not good at maths or science, they're good, they are good at maths and science. And, but they simply, i- it just doesn't account for why people select into those subjects. And the selection, though, doesn't just happen in higher education, it happens prior to that too. It happens on optional choices within eh post-compulsory education, which then prepares you for higher education. And even if you look at people who are equally prepared in staff for STEM and higher education in terms of their subject choices and in terms of their achievement in those choices, you still find a gender gap. And so, as I said, results in an international context are broadly in line eh the UK with international evidence. And PISA data shows that the fifteen-year-old eh girl's performance in literacy exceeds that of boys considerably in every country. And for maths and science, the gender gap is much smaller. And it's also eh, the gender gaps also depend on things like whether you look at PISA, whether you look at TIMS as well. So it, it matters how the assessment is done, it matters what's been actually covered by some of these assessments. And in most OECD countries, the share of females in tertiary education is between fifty and sixty percent. And it's always, it seems to be, many, many countries, boys are more likely to enter in maths-intensive science fields in upper secondary and tertiary education. And so how do you explain male underachievement? Well, it's not, it doesn't appear to be about an age cognitive abilities that differ between girls and boys in a way that would lead to expected differences in their educational eh performance at school. So that's, at least that's what the literature I'm aware of eh says. And, but in contrast, for what we would call non-cognitive abilities very broadly, there's very clear, very consistent and very large gender differences in behavioral problems in attributes like attentiveness, organizational skills and self-discipline in some of the eh more extreme, you know, problems that may, you know, like ADHD and those sorts of dyslexia, those sorts of things eh would be more prevalent in boys. And all of those things are important for explaining eh the changing patterns in college-going when returns to education increased. And it's girls that can take advantage of that and have some of the eh non-cognitive skills that are necessary to achieve well in performance. And the two together eh would explain some of the eh, you know, increases in eh female eh participation over time. And the, of course, these eh abilities, differences in abilities may be eh reinforced by stereotypical attitudes and bias. And there's been a few interesting studies on eh that eh showing the teacher bias eh leads, can lead to gender inequality with longer-term consequences. And, and there's an interesting eh debate as well about the extent to which boys and girls are influenced by their family inputs. So there's a paper by Bertrand and Pan that says that boys' deficits in non-cognitive skills is more influenced by family inputs than girls. And, but on, in contrast, Shelley Lundberg finds that eh boys and girls are both reactive parental inputs, they simply react differently. So boys react through behavioral problems and girls are more likely to react through anxiety and depression and both lead to poor outcomes in the longer term. So it's not very straightforward. So policy issues to deal with, address male underachievement, I suppose the one question is really.
Sorry, you have five minutes.
Okay, okay. One question, is this an issue of gender or poor performance? And if you think it's poor performance, maybe you don't necessarily need to target gender in particularly. But an alternative argument is that there are some externalities for male underachievement that might be eh important. And for example, eh the relationship between eh not being in education and crime being eh quite serious for males sometimes. And in terms of policies, you could, the target poor performance, things like school resources, improving school resources, eh looking at literacy interventions, there is evidence that boys benefit more from those than girls. And there's a, a good evidence base that eh improving non-cog- non-cognitive skills are, are malleable and maybe that has a differential gender impact, although I'm not aware of, of that literature so well. And, and the other policy eh thing is that improving vocational o- opportunities, say at sub-degree level, which is eh something that the, an aspiration eh within England and that may disproportionately benefit boys, especially given that they're not going to go to university or not going to university currently in as high numbers as women are. And there's a huge literature about eh females and STEM eh, which, which is in the paper, but I've contributed to one of the literature reviews on this, but there, and that you could do a literature review of the literature reviews, there are so many out there and by educational psychologists as well as by economists. And I've highlighted some of the things that are important eh within this literature. So a lot of studies find that girls have low self-efficacy in maths, this has nothing to do with how good they are. This has had to do with your confidence, how, how good you think you are. And, and some of those problems may be accentuated by teacher gender stereotypes and that has implications for people's choices later on, and that's been shown very well in the literature too. And it's been shown that eh girls have less confidence, self-efficacy and competitiveness. And this impacts on whether they're willing to enter into what are seen as competitive and difficult areas like STEM are sometimes associated with, and, and that also can influence their performance. I've highlighted preferences and expectations because in this context, it's probably the most important thing eh that eh girls and boys or men and women having different preferences eh and expectations about roles and maybe one of the most important things which influences what people choose to do later on. And that, of course, is in turn influenced by cultural environment and stereotypes. And so policy issues to address gender differences. And well, one of the studies that shows that tastes and preferences matter a lot and economics for what people choose to do is by, by Saffar. And I'm just quoting eh him here in that a possible implication is to encourage policies that increase the representation of females in academic science and engineering. And since these female professors may change female students' beliefs and preferences towards STEM coursework and careers. And there is a, a really good studies about the positive effects of female role models in a variety of contexts. And, and that is shown to be quite important eh for eh women's participation in STEM. And it's also important to diversify the image of some of these eh fields. And so this is a educational psychologist's eh work in particular, showing that it's important to, for example, diversify the image of computer science and engineering beyond a narrow. beyond a narrow profile that can be very stereotypically male and unappealing to girls. And one of the suggested policy solutions is that curriculum design has a role. There's a big international project, the relevance of science education. And this is saying that when you're designing the curriculum about teaching these subjects in schools, you do need to be sensitive to what interests girls and what interests boys. And that may influence their future direction as well, in addition, of course, to role models. And so I'll leave it there.
And right on time, I have to say, Sandra. So exactly twenty minutes. And I think you left it at a very important point that, that, you know, what you said about computer science and changing the way that we perceive that field. That is what we're also need to do in economics and in, in particular, the initiative of Discover Economics, which was initiated a couple of years ago by Sarah Smith, is, is trying to do that because the underrepresentation of women in the field starts early on, it starts at the A-levels and follows on at the undergraduate, et cetera. So, so I think there are lots of lessons for the discipline as well. Thank you so much. And, and I think it's a perfect transition for what Micaela is going to be talking about. So, Micaela, let you, let you go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much for the invitation. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I think like the, the work of Sandra is a very good connection with what I will talk about next. Let me start from two motivating facts that are somehow related to what Sandra was talking about. So the first one is that in most countries, we actually do have in PISA twenty fifteen that math performance of boys is higher compared to the one of girls during high school. So we are talking about age fifteen of these kids, but the opposite is true for readings. And if you see a map across countries, in red, we have the countries in which like boys are doing better than girls in PISA twenty fifteen, while in green, we have those countries where girls are doing better than boys in math. At that point in time, this like data that are comparable across countries. There is a second very interesting fact on the gender gap in math. And it is, we have seen in some papers that these, these gaps tend to be actually wider in those countries that tend to have like stronger gender stereotypes. And the work I will present today will be related to Italian data that is one of those countries with like very strong gender stereotypes and is one of the countries with the biggest, like, still the biggest gender gap in math performance. So the big question I'm actually after is whether exposure to that gender stereotypes can affect educational achievement and the educational choices of individuals. And since it's very tough to get at the broad exposure, because a lot of things change if you get exposed to more or less gender stereotypes while growing up, I will more precisely focus on the role of exposure to teacher gender stereotypes and how they affect the student achievement and educational choices of students. Before going on, let me clarify a couple of concepts. So when I talk about stereotypes, what I have in mind are overgeneralized representations of differences between two groups. So for example, you may have like some stereotypes that Italians are love food, but not all stereotypes necessarily lead to biased behavior toward that specific group. Well, like if a teacher has the stereotype that girls are bad at math, this may lead to change in the behavior that they have toward these group, leading like to discrimination later on, or even leading to form of self-fulfilling prophecy with the negative stereotype that gets internalized by the individual and they start behaving exactly in the direction predicted by the stereotype. And in particular, in the context of teacher stereotypes, social psychologists have shown that teachers tend to believe that math is more difficult for girls than equally achieving boys. So there are a couple of papers that actually provided some first evidence on that. On two boy, a boy and girl with the same performance in a test score, the teacher predicts like a lower performance for the girl compared to the boy. And this may have like important implications that are implicit in the interaction with, within the classroom. And in particular, it could be, for example, that the teacher tend to challenge boys more. They ask them to solve the most difficult math exercise compared to girls. Or it could be affecting like into the one-to-one encouragement toward the students, for example, in the future career and which kind of like track to take up or whether to go into STEM or not. The important thing is that today I will focus on implicit stereotypes with the idea that teachers do not necessarily want to harm any of the group, but they may act even without the intention of harm any member of the stigmatized group, still leading to a negative impact toward these individuals. I will show you the impact of teacher gender stereotypes on math performance. Today I will cut to the part on reading, but in the paper, there is also like the somehow peculiar impact on reading where the gaps are in favor of girls, the impact on track, track choice, and especially the impact on self-confidence of students in the different, in their own abilities in the different fields. A key challenge of these would be how we measure stereotypes. And this, as like Almudena was nicely saying at the beginning, this is a little bit of the contribution of a recent strength of literature that tried to use a tool that is the implicit association test that was designed by social psychologists within like somehow an economic framework. And I will briefly explain you exactly why I believe this test brings a contribution in this field. And the second aspect, I will not have much time to go into that, but, but I will exploit some form of like as-good-as-random assignment of teachers to students, of students to teachers with different level of bias within the school that will allow to get at the causal estimate of the impact of exposure to teacher stereotypes on a later outcome of these students. So the second, as I said at the beginning, these are schools in Italy located all in the north of the country. And we have like a bunch of administrative data, including like data on test score, track choice. We follow over time the students. And we also have like a blind test score in grade six and eight and like information on the family background. On top of that, I collected some self-reported data with like a sub-sample of students, including their self-confidence and the self-efficacy of students in each subject. These data are matched with teacher data, that is, I believe, the most innovative part of this work, in which we, we go into these more than one hundred schools and interview all the teachers in these, all the math and Italian teachers in these schools, having like more than one thousand four hundred teachers that are part of the sample. And we collect a bunch of information, including like demographic information, very detailed information on their careers and the gender science implicit association test and form of explicit bias of these teachers. So this, this is a little bit of what was going on in the field. So I was bringing tablets into the school and all the teachers were completing like the survey within the school building after the end of the school day. And here in a nutshell, how the implicit association test, that is the key measure that I will use, works. So the important aspect is that each individual will do two types of task, task A and task B. In task A, they will associate scientific subject that will be, that will be identified with like a green color in this case, and, and the female names on the left side of the screen. So they have like a bunch of words that appear at the center of the screen, and they needed to press the blue button on the right or on the left, associating the word that appear at the center of the screen with the correct category. If the word is in green, it belongs to one of the two green categories. For example, here we have the literature that is a humanistic subject, and they should press the blue button on the right. They will have one hundred and eighty words and half of them like are names of boys and girls. And they will have to associate the name of boys and girls with the respective category and pressing the blue bottom on the left or on the right. So every time they touch the screen in both task A, where we have scientific and female on the same side of the screen, and task B, where we have scientific and male on the same side of the screen, they will, we will record the reaction time to this association. The intuition of the implicit association test is that if it is more difficult for an individual to do task A, where they associate scientific with female, compared to task B, where they associate scientific with male, it means that they have some form of implicit association that makes it harder for them to associate like STEM field with, with women compared to with men. So it's like a within-subject variation that we are exploiting to generate a score that will tell us how strong is the association between gender and field for the specific teacher. If they are faster in doing task B compared to task A, I would say that they have some form of implicit stereotypes. And so, let me just tell you, I have a lot of details on that, but like I just wanted to show you like some correlation between these score and the some characteristics of these teachers. So this is like just for the sample of math teachers. And what you can see is that if a math teacher is female, and in this sample is like eighty percent of the teachers, they tend to have a lower association between STEM fields and, and the males compared to male teachers that are, have a stronger association between their own gender, gender and the scientific field. On the other hand, like a second aspect is very interesting. And these teachers are all currently working in the north of the country where gender norms tend to be less strong compared to the south of Italy. But we do find that forty percent of these teachers were actually born in the south of the country. And there is this strong correlation between whether they are born in the south of Italy and their measured implicit association test while they are during adulthood, while they are teaching in these schools. And furthermore, we find this association is also very strong with like female labor force participation in the city of birth of these teachers. And also with a measure of from the world value survey of gender equality in the place of birth of this teacher. Interestingly, if we have the same exact question asked at individual level, the same question from the world, that world value survey, asked the teachers during the survey, we don't find any association. And this is mainly due probably to social desirability bias, as these teachers were asked explicit questions about the stereotypes in the school building while they know that they are interviewed as, as teachers. Let me jump straight away to the main result. So here, I'm showing you that in the Italian context, here is like eighth grade. We have on average girls that are lagging behind, behind of zero point eighteen standard deviation compared to boys. And in this regression, I first include only classics effect. The, the result is very similar. If I exclude the classics effect, the gap is like around zero point two standard deviations. And what I do next is simply adding like the interaction between the gender of the student and the stereotypes of the teachers. When I always like a control for class fix effect that absorb all level of characteristics of these teachers. And I'm just like looking at the interaction between the gender of the student and the stereotypes measured by the implicit association test of these teachers. And this zero point zero three two is telling us that one standard deviation more bias of my teachers is leading to an increase of zero point zero thirty-two standard deviation, the gender gap into the classroom. Just to give you an idea, if we are going to the, from the bottom twenty-five percent to the top twenty-five percent of teachers, the gender gap will change of around zero point fifteen standard deviation. So this seems like a small, because it's just like the impact of one standard deviation, but there is a lot of variation in the data. And we will have this gap that if we divide in these, will, will be very substantial change by going like to the, from the worst to the best teachers in this sample. And you can see here that the result is very stable when I include like student-level controls. I have like background information on the parents, their education and occupation. And also if I interact with these controls by the gender of the student and if I add like the teacher-level controls interacted by the gender of the student. For example, whether the teacher is female, interacted by the gender of the student. So these results are like very, very robust. Here is a similar specification, but just like splitting the sample and exploiting like adding like a court fix effect, school by court fix effect, and just seeing what happened if like a girl entered into the same school, two girls entering to the same school in the same year, and one is assigned to a teacher that has a stronger implicit bias compared to the other. And you can see that this is like in the x-axis, we have the teacher implicit association test and then test and in the y-axis, we have the test score in math. And you can see that if you are associated to a teacher that has a more implicit bias, your gap, your like performance in math is, is lower. And interestingly, this impact is pretty linear. So the more bias of your teacher, there is a linear, sort of like very close to linear impact on the performance of girls. But we don't have any effect on boys. So in boys, there is like this complete flat line that is a little bit sad because it means that on top of like being detrimental for girls, if you have a teacher with more implicit bias, this is not helping boys either. So there is no differential impact on boys as well. And so next, I'm showing you the impact on high school track choice.
Micaela, you have five-
Perfect. So in the Italian context, after middle school, so after eighth grade, students actually get a four, so during eighth grade, they get like a formal teacher track recommendation on the type of high school they are supposed to do, or like they are encouraged to do according to their teachers. And on top of, after that, they will choose the high school. And here you can see like most of like the potential choices. So there are two top-tier track, that is a scientific and classical high school, and vocational track that tend to have the student with the lowest performance. And like we have a bunch of like intermediate track that are pretty similar in terms of like average performance of students that self-select into this track. So if I use like a northern probit, you can see that on average, like there is a pretty strong impact on the probability of attending a better track. If you are assigned, if you are a girl and you are assigned to a teacher that has a stronger implicit bias. So this impact is pretty substantial and is mainly driven, I'm not showing you all the results, but is mainly driven from girls that are, that are pushed into vocational track instead of like going into the intermediate track that is the linguistic and psychological or education liceum, that is this academic track. So they are pushed from that to vocational. And, and finally, the further, the further tier results that I wanted to show you. So I haven't showed you, like, actually, these results are actually matching perfectly what happens in the teacher track recommendation. These are not only girls that are more likely to attend like a lower-quality school, but they are also pushed by their teachers to attend a lower-quality school. And finally, the, the last output that I wanted to show you is in terms of like their self-confidence in math ability. Here, the sample size is like a lot reduced because this is coming from an additional survey that I administered in like a sample of around forty schools and like eighth-grade students. But you can see that if a girl is exposed to a teacher with a stronger implicit bias, they tend to have lower- But you can see that if a girl is exposed to a teacher with a stronger implicit bias, they tend to have lower self-efficacy, they believe they are worse in math, even controlling for their performance at the end of middle school. Something that I've already shown you that was negatively affected by the exposure to teacher gender stereotypes. And here there seemed to be an effect on top of that due to self-confidence. So let me summarize. So I show you that there is a strong impact of teacher implicit stereotypes on the gender gap in math performance. I haven't shown you that, but this is mainly driven by the lower, the girls that are in the middle and low part of the ability distribution. So it's not coming from like the top achievers. And there is no effect on readings, that is, this is an additional factor that I haven't shown you in the presentation. But still we find effect on inducing girls to self-select into vocational training and the lower tier high school tracks. And the negative impact on their self-confidence. So what to do next? So there are potentially two ways that I'm exploring with further research. So the first one is try to boost girls like knowledge and confidence in the STEM fields while they are still in middle school. Before they get trapped into different like subjects. And this is like a project that a randomized control trial that we are, we have in progress. And we are still, we are already finding like some positive results from the pilot. In terms of like pushing girls, like encouraging girls more to become a programmer, attending like STEM fields later on. Or an alternative policy implication could be to work with teachers and trying to find ways to decrease the impact of their own stereotypes on their students. And and here I have a couple of work in progress, but I know that I'm running out of time. So let me just like stop here with this.
Thank you, Micaela. I wanted to learn more, so I'm left, but we are out of time. There are a couple of questions for you, so I hope that we can get to that at the end of the session. But for the sake of fairness, let's move on to our last presenter. It's Paola Di Giuliani who's talking about norms.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Almudena, for organizing such a great session. So I'm going to summarize the chapter that I wrote for the Oxford Review of Economic Policy. So it was an issue that was edited by Almudena. And then the chapter essentially reviewed the literature on gender gaps and cultural norms. So the motivation, so the literature on social norms and gender, at least in economics, is relatively new. And I think probably as basic motivations, I can start with some survey data. So one way in which differences in gender norms are measured is by looking at subjective measure from the world value survey. And then if you look, so one standard question is when job are scarce, men should have more right to a job than women. And then if you look all over the world, there is, there are huge differences. So in some countries, the fraction of people who say yes is very low. So this includes places like Iceland or the US, but even places in Africa like Rwanda. And then in the other stream of the distributions, you have Egypt and Pakistan with ninety-five percent and eighty percent. But also some countries like Japan where sixty percent of the population answer yes. So there is a strong correlation between subjective measure of the role of women in society and then participation in the labor market. And again, you can see that, for example, in Egypt, only twenty-one percent of women are in the labor force. Similarly, a similar low fraction is for Pakistan. And then not very high is a country like Japan, sixty percent, or Italy where the fraction is forty-six percent. And again, the other spectrum of the distribution, you have countries like Iceland. So very strongly correlated with the fractions of people answering the questions about gender norm. But also places like Burundi and Tanzania. So you know, these differences are not necessarily correlated with GDP. And so this is a chart that was in one of the first paper on labor force participations and gender norms by Nicole Fortan. So you can see the correlations between employment rates and then subjective measures. And then this is for developed countries. So you can see that there are big clusters. So for example, northern European countries, they have equal gender norms and high female labor force participations. And then on the other side, you have a place like Turkey where they are both very low. And then in between you have places like the US and the UK. So there is a large literature on what's determine differences in differences in labor market participation and gender gaps. Most of this literature, so there is a nice book by Iverson and Rosenblatt. But essentially, most paper, they emphasize proximate causes, like you know, differences in economic development, differences in institutions, childcare and so on. Relatively recent literature has emphasized the importance of cultural norms. So probably the first correlation was by Nicole Fortan, so the picture that I show you. And then Fernandes and Fodi, they look at behavior of second generation immigrants in the US. Female labor, in terms of female labor force participation and what is going on in the country of origin. And they did document a very strong correlations. And so they attribute these correlations to cultural norm. And so the idea of this natural, sort of natural experiment is that, well, if we look at people born and raised in the same countries, let's say the US. And but their parents come from different parts of the world. You know, controlling for all the characteristics we can control for. If we find a very strong correlations between their behavior and what is going on in the country of origin, we can attribute it to cultural norm. And so this was one way of showing that culture matters. And then the literature essentially moved after that. And then part of the literature look at the origin of cultural norms. So this is what I will review. And then more recently, the literature start to look at how norms can change and where, where, you know, they are sticky or not. And then also if policy can change cultural norms. So let's me go broadly about what is in the chapter in the paper. So the paper first review all the different papers that have looked at the historical origin of gender norms. So I will talk briefly about some of my work. So I've written about the importance of agricultural technology. But there are several papers that look at, for example, the importance of geographic characteristics, linguistic differences, religion, a different type of historical shocks. So let's me tell you about some of my work. So these are a series of paper all joined with Alberto Eresina and Nathan Nunn. And essentially, we show that the type of agricultural technologies that societies use in pre-industrial times can be very powerful in explaining differences in female labor force participations, differences in political participations. Variety of beliefs about gender norms. So this include inheritance rule, social norms such as the dowry versus the bride price. But also even measure of health and survival, such as for example, the sex ratio at birth. So this is the main intuitions of the paper. So the intuitions come from a book written by Esther Bozerup, so Women's Role in Economic Development. And essentially, her idea is the following. So if you look at pre-industrial societies, there are two types of agricultural technologies that societies could use. One was using the plow. And then men have a physical advantage in, in using the plows. And this society, men were participating in the field and women were staying at home, taking, taking care of the animals of all the children. Then you have another type of agriculture, so this is called shifting agriculture. It doesn't require physical strength, so instrument that they use are the hoe, the digging stick is compatible even with childbearing. And so women and men participate equally in agriculture. And so essentially, there is this historical division of labor. But then what Esther Bozerup claim in her book is that as a result of this distinction, division of labor that lasted for centuries. The beliefs about the role of women in society were formed and then they tend to persist over time. And so this is what we do in our research. So I don't have time to go into the details, but essentially, we collect data on the ancestral use of the plow for different part of the world. We do some analysis which is at the cross-country level, but then we do a lot of within-country analysis. So I will just show you the cross-country analysis because it's easier for, you know, for intuitions. But essentially, you can create a map of ancestral plow use. So in some countries, most of the ancestor was using the plow, like for example, Europe. In some other countries, like for example, Africa, there is much more variations. And so this is what we document. So we first document, controlling for a series of country characteristics. We document that there is a negative relationship between female labor force participations and the use of the plow. And as you can see, there is even a lot of within continent variations. We also see that there is a negative correlation if you look at other indications, like for example, the share of companies with female ownership. And even the share of political positions held by women. So this is a paper that wrote more recently, we look at different type of sex ratio. The most important one is sex ratio at birth. Here we look at sex ratio even up to fourteen. And you do find that there is a positive correlation between ancestral plow use and a biased gender ratio at birth. So now you may, you know, when we look at differences in female labor force participations, we know that in the most recent period, they have increased over time. But in fact, this chart documents that there is a lot of persistence. So this is the participation in agriculture in pre-industrial society. And this is female labor force participation today. And then even if many things have changed, there is still a pretty strong correlation with what women were doing in the very distant past and what women were doing today. And then I've written also another survey chapter a while ago. I look at other type of social norms and they are all related to the use of plow in pre-industrial society. For example, whether parental authority mostly go to father, whether inheritance rule are more biased towards boy. Whether women have low freedom of movement outside the house. And then finally, whether there are restrictions on the dress code and even the presence of polygamy. So this is, again, we, we did it with agricultural technologies. And there are a series of papers that look at other characteristics. But in the remaining time, I want to talk about the type of papers that are emphasizing more the learning part of social norms. And so here are some of the papers that I review in the chapter. So a come, like an important driver of gender differences is whether women lived under a state socialist regime. So this is a very nice paper by Campa and Seraphinelli. And so they did find that, they look at the difference between East and West Germany. And they did find that living under state socialist regime is important for female labor force participation and differences in gender norms. Leonardo Burstein has a fascinating paper on Saudi Arabia. And so they did find that if they provide the correct informations about whether women should work in society or not. Then female labor force participation can change, even in a part of the world where social norms are very traditional. And then there are two papers, one by Alessandra Follia and Laura Velkamp, and another one by Raquel Fernandez. And they do emphasize the importance of social learning. And so here the, so these are, you know, theoretical paper with some calibrations and some empirical analysis. But the main idea is if I see women working around me, I consider this, you know, more common trait. And so I can learn. And so they, they look at the evolutions of female labor force participation, they did find that is a shape. So it can be very low at the beginning, but once women start to learn, then it can increase even quite fast. We just published a paper with Nathan Nunn. And so this is a general paper in which we look at when the condition under which social norm in general persists and when social norm change. And the main intuition of the paper, and then we look also at the gender norms among the norms that we analyze in the paper. And we do find that the stability of the environment matters. And so here the intuition is the following. If you think about social norm like rule of thumb. If the environment has been stable for centuries, whatever my parents transmit me at some point is very useful. And so, you know, I, I use the same norm, one generation after the others. But if the environment is very unstable each year or, you know, in each generations, there is a lot of experimentation. So the stability of the, the instability of the environment typically correlates with lower persistence of social norms. And then Gavazzi and Coeters, they have a paper in which they look at different type of social norms. The one that has been studied in economics, for example, trust, religiosity, differences in gender norms. They find that some nor, it's more descriptive, so they find that some norms are more persistent than others. And when they look at gender norms, they are somewhere, somewhat in between. So part of the literature, so let's say the literature has gone through phases. So the first set of paper were probably about the, the cultural transmissions. But you know, the typical empirical paper, or not many of the empirical paper, they look at immigrants and they says, well, if immigrants reflect what is going on in the country of origin, it means that they learn from their parents. Now, if we look at the theoretical work on cultural transmissions, there are three channel of cultural transmissions. One is vertical transmissions, this is from parents to children. One is horizontal transmission, this is the importance of peers. And then the last one is about the oblique transmission, which is the importance of role models, like for example, teachers. And so the literature now is trying to pin down the different channel of transmissions. So on vertical transmissions, there is a paper by Ferrara and Bella. So they essentially look at the national longitude in a study of youth of nineteen seventy-nine. And they did find that there is a correlation between the gender norms of the mother and then the gender norms of the children. And then they have a recent paper with Gaia Dossi and Coeters in which we tried to isolate the vertical transmissions of a social norm in explaining differences in gender gap in mathematics. And we do measure differences in gender norms by looking at fertility stopping rules, but also subjective measures. There are now also some papers on horizontal transmissions. So there is an interesting paper by Anelli and Perry. They do have Italian data in which there are, there is random assignment on girls and boys in high school. And then they look at the share of women and men in the same classroom to see whether it determines the type of field that they chose in, in college. So STEM field versus non-STEM field. And they find not super strong effect actually for women, but stronger effect for men. Meaning that if there are more men around, men are more likely to go to typically male-dominated field. Burstein and Coeter.
You have less than five minutes.
Yeah, okay, I'm almost done. Burstein and Coeter, they have an interesting experiment among MBAs. And they did find that, you know, when, when women have the pressures of their MBA female friends. They essentially show much a lower level of ambitions and declare they want to work fewer hours and so on. And then more recently, there is an interesting paper that look at the horizontal transmissions from the opposite side. Meaning that they take deportees or minorities and they see how they can change gender norms of the general populations. And so since Micaela just presented, so there are now some papers on oblique transmissions. So teachers are very important for the performance of girls in mathematics. There is also another paper by Levy and Sand. And then for economics, there is a very interesting experiment by Porter and Sarah. So what they did find is if in college, if students, female students are exposed to women role models in the first econ class. And for, you know, the intervention is fairly short, it's probably, you know, ten to fifteen minutes. And for, you know, the intervention is fairly short, it's probably, you know, 10 to 15 minutes. They're much more likely to choose economics as a field later on. So let's me conclude. So if I had to oversummarize the literature on the origin and evolutions of gender norms. Several papers have documented that gender norms have persisted over time. Now, the literature has moved in trying to understand when, you know, when there is more persistence and when there is instead a lower amount of persistence. And so what's the, the few papers that are out there find is that persistence is stronger when the environment is stable and tend to be reinforced by several channels of cultural transmissions. The traditional one, which is the importance of the family, but also peer pressure and gender biases among authority figures such as teacher and role models. Now, in this literature, since it's emphasized the persistence part mostly, it's very hard to come up with policy implications. There are very few papers that have, you know, strong policy implications, one of which is the paper by Alessina and Coeters. So they essentially say, well, if was drive participation in the labor market are differences in gender norm, one way is to use gender-based taxation to try to modify the incentive and, you know, the outside options. And so the general policy conclusions will be, you know, when we try to apply different policies to different countries, we should take into account the underlying cultural beliefs because the same type of policies can have very different effects depending on the underlying beliefs of the specific populations. Okay, and with this, I'm done. So I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you very much, Paola, and thank you very much to all the presenters. We've gone over the time and it's been totally my fault, but I've asked for some permission to, to stay a little bit longer. So I, I would like to ask one question from the audience to each one of you, but I would really urge you to answer in one, two minutes. So it's gonna be a little bit of a, of a run, but let's see, let's see how it goes. So I'm going to choose the first one to Monica. An insightful presentation. Do you think that COVID-19 has damaged any progress we achieved towards gender equality in terms of pay?
Yeah, so I think this is still a very much open question and that's something that we are looking at quite seriously. There are signs that, you know, of responses in different ways. On the one hand, obviously, people are working from home more and yet can benefit mothers relatively if, you know, they are able to, you know, do different types of jobs and better jobs from home or partly from home. On the other hand, we also see that mothers are interrupted continuously and that has been shown in previous papers to be really very damaging for productivity. And so it may actually reverse those, all those gains. So, you know, it's early days, but hopefully we'll have clearer ideas very, very soon.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, we continue with Sandra. There were two questions, but they were very similar. And I think that the gesture of the question is what lessons can we learn from STEM, from, from girls joining up STEM, what lessons can we draw for economics? If you can say a little bit more, more on that.
I would say, I mean, on the stereotype issues, you know, people may have a very stereotypically, stereotypical attitude to economics in the way that they do sometimes to engineering, to things they, subjects they may not really be exposed to at school. So if you are thinking of what economics is and you imagine, I don't know, a group of male bankers in a very macho culture, that may not appeal to lots of girls, even though we know that economics is hugely broad. And so I think one lesson is with all of these things, with economics, but with other courses as well, it is important that people have a broader view or learn what these things are. And I don't think it can just be about career guidance and information. I think it's actually in the materials of the curriculum themselves at school when they've been developed. That those things are important too, not, not just at the point of giving people information and guidance. Let's stop there.
That's a very interesting point, actually, because we normally focus on giving people information, but actually restructuring to get rid of those biases that are inherent in the, in the curriculum, I think. That's quite important. And moving on to Michela. It is interesting that we have focused on the school teachers, gender bias and the impact on gender gaps. I would be interested to know if we thought we may find similar findings in higher education, university teachers. Is the same effect, do you think that we would find the same effect if we were to look, say, at us, basically?
Yeah. So one of my current work in progress is exactly to look at faculty members in community colleges in the US. So I would say like, stay tuned that I will tell you what I find in a few months. So for now, like from the pilot evidence, we find very like a smaller impact compared to what I was finding like at the younger level, but a lot of like awareness. So there is like a lot of like attention in the US to these matters. So a lot of the differences may come from different contexts, like Italy versus the US and different like age group and education, somehow exposure of the teachers and like faculty members.
All right. Well, thank you so much. That's very useful to know what you're working, working on, because you're working on so many interesting things. All right. So Paola, this is, this is an interesting question. So a question for Paola. Sub-Saharan Africa seems to have exhibited very low levels of plow use historically. How can we relate this to the fact that the region also has the highest level of fertility in the world? Even conditional on a number of country-level aggregates such as GDP or years of schooling?
So we do, we do have a separate paper in which we, we look at the at the relevance of the plow use and fertility. And so we do find that there is a correlation. So whenever I present this paper is especially for the cross-country correlations, it's hard to find counterfactors. So I will give you another example. So if I look at Europe, Europe is considered all plow positive. But then if you look at differences between Sweden and Italy, there are large disparities. And so although they were both, you know, plow use. So essentially, take the cross-country analysis as an indications. And then probably the strongest part of the paper is when we look at within-country analysis. So there are probably eight countries, some of them come from Africa and some of them come from Asia in which inside the same countries, there is variations in, in the use of the plow by ethnicities. And then another aspect is that every time I present, you know, by which of the presentations, I emphasize the importance of the plow by, but we don't mean that this is the only driver of differences in gender norms, of differences in female labor force participations. There are other drives that are important. There may be some drives that are more important for other parts of the world. The research started because if we look at traditional economic interpretations, they cannot explain, you know, differences, so pronounced differences, even if we control for, you know, GDP or differences in institutions. But I don't, I mean, I'm sure that there are exceptions. So I should look within Sub-Saharan Africa and try to understand what could be driving the result.
Okay. Well, thank you very much to all, to all of you, to all the speakers for such wonderful presentations, for keeping to time despite I couldn't. And this, this session has been recorded and will be posted on the R E S website, I think. So I know there were some questions unanswered, but hopefully we'll have another chance to, to talk in another setup. So stay tuned, everybody, to all the research that is being done in this field. And we'll see you shortly. Thank you so much. Bye.